We've got about a minute and we've got a couple council people that are out of service area tonight. Carolyn will handle that. And it's 6:00 PM. So I'm going to call the Anacortes City Council meeting for February 16th, 2021 to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougall? Mr. Miller? Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
I would like to move to excuse Mr. Miller and Mr. McDougall from this evening's meeting if they were unable to attend.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to excuse Councilman Miller and Councilman McDougall. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. So I'll move on now to item two, announcements and community reports, and I'll start with my COVID update for this evening. These are, as of today, Island Hospital has tested 12,152 people since March of 2020. We've had a total, they've had a total of 252 positive cases from their testing. They've admitted 42 people to the hospital and we've had no deaths in Anacortes. Twenty, excuse me, 2,342 vaccines have been administered by Island Hospital to date. And of those, 1,737 have received their first dose and 605 have received their second dose. Island Hospital has no COVID-19 vaccine appointments for this week and they'll give you an update on February 22nd. That is because they have not received any vaccines. The next item is from Skagit County and these numbers are as of Valentine, actually as of Sunday. And the date, let's see, they've had so far in Skagit County, a positive number of 4,027 COVID-19 cases. We now are standing at 57 deaths and 247 people has been, have been hospitalized. The county also estimates that currently in the 98221 zip code, there are 368 current positive COVID cases. COVID-19 testing site at Skagit County Fairgrounds has been, is to close permanently after Saturday, March 13th. And Skagit County Public Health will continue to utilize the fairgrounds for COVID-19 vaccinations. And only testing providers are available, and other testing providers are also available in Skagit County. So the county is getting out of the testing business and totally going to focus on vaccines. And they're hoping that by the end of the month, the distribution and production issues have been solved at the federal level. So, you know, because it's, that's really what the problem is. We're not getting the vaccines coming into the state right now. Many doctor offices and pharmacies are now offering COVID-19 testing and it's time for public health to shift and focus, as I just mentioned. A total number of vaccines administered in Skagit County as of the ninth, which was last Tuesday, of 18,818 vaccines have been given to that date in the county. Due to lack of supply, no first dose appointments are available for this week. And second dose appointments will be impacted. Check back on this Saturday, February 20th at 9:00 AM for an, for an update. In the state of Washington, we've had 331,000 cases of COVID-19 and we've had 4,739 deaths. On Monday, February 15th, the North Region, which includes Skagit County, Island, San Juan, and Watcom moved to Phase Two. And our current stats are as follows. We have a 32% decreasing trend in cases and the metric was we have to have at least a 10% decreasing trend. 17% decrease in COVID-19 hospital admissions and we've, we needed to have at least 10%. Our ICU occupancy is at 53% and the goal was less than 90%. And the test positivity rate was 6% with a goal of at least, less than 10%. So we finally met all four metrics in the four county region, which is incredible. Phase Two guidelines. So now that we're in Phase Two, as I believe all, all but maybe one or two counties in the state are. Indoor social gatherings with people from outside your household should not include more than five people and be limited to two households. Outdoor social gatherings shall be limited to 15 people from outside your household and it should be limited to two households. Worship services are allowed to have up to 25% indoor capacity. Retail stores, including the farmer's market, is allowed to have up to 25% indoor capacity. And curbside pickup is encouraged. Professional services are allowed to 25% indoor capacity with remote work strongly encouraged. And that is something that here at the city called, that's what we're following that guideline. Personal services are allowed up to 25% indoor capacity. That would be something like your hair salon. Eating and drinking establishments are limited to 25% capacity for indoor service. Outdoor dining and to-go service are permitted, provided that all outdoor dining must comply with the requirements of the outdoor open-air guidance. Table size for indoor and outdoor dining is limited to a maximum of six people and two households. Establishments only serving individuals 21 years and older and no food is, with no food, oh, mainly bars. Anybody that serves only, anything that does not serve food and for people 21 and older are still remain closed. So you want to have a food component in any type of eating situation or drinking situation. And please visit the governor's website for more Phase Two guidance. In the United States, we have, we've had 27.8 million cases. We've had 487,000 deaths. And worldwide, we've had 109 million confirmed cases of COVID-19, including 2.4 million deaths. And that was reported by the World Health Organization. The other note I will make on COVID-19, today internally, we met and we talked about making sure that when it's time, we are ready with what a public, open public meeting would look like. What we'd have to do for social distancing for council members, maybe some being in the council chambers, some attending remotely, because we do believe the governor is going to allow those types of meetings pretty soon. And so we're, we're going to meet the next week or two with, and make sure we have a plan together for that. All, all departments also are working on a plan for what the next phase of opening would be like. We feel like some of the services that we, we offer right now have transitioned to a virtual platform that we think a lot of our public will stay with. We, we found that a lot of people really appreciate paying online, their utility bills. Our contractors actually love our new permit availability online, our approval process for plans. And we, we think that that will not go away even when we can reopen the building. So we're, and the library is also looking at ways to reopen. So we're well in the works on that. We don't know when the day will come, but the governor often gives us a notice on Friday for a Monday opening. So we want to have a plan in place for when that day comes. Are there any questions or thoughts along that line?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
I would just suggest that if there are options included in what the governor says about reversing changes to the Open Public Meetings Act, that we have those discussions.
Absolutely.
Because we might not really, might not really want the unlevel playing field of some council members being told to stay home and some being allowed to come to City Hall or vice versa.
Well, you're all allowed. We didn't know what the comfort level would be when that would happen, but Mac did say today we could spread out. We've got Plexiglas. We can make it work.
I just anticipate that there will be some choices and one, one choice might be to remain vertical.
Absolutely. So we'll just see what comes from the governor at some point. But I know today I was on a chamber call and the Office of Superintendent's, the Public Instruction, has given word to the school districts that they can start having regular board meetings. And I, so I don't, I needed, I'm going to call Dr. Irish tomorrow and get more information on that. I was a little surprised to hear that. He, they're looking on how to roll that out and, you know, he's new to the district. And so he said he'd never met in person with his board. So he was looking forward when, when that opportunity arrives. So I was surprised to hear that, that that's coming to that, that, that part of the government. So more to come. We will include the council in that discussion before we, we do anything. So, all right. Anything else? Okay. Then we'll move on to item 2B, our Finance Committee report.
Mayor Gear?
Walters?
A couple of us from the Finance Committee met last week. We talked about a number of things that are on tonight's agenda, so I won't belabor those. They include the AFC agreement and the line of credit ordinance. We also talked about staffing at the water treatment plant. And it appears we have some issues related to appropriate levels of compensation for our staff and the consequences when we don't have those appropriate levels. We can't maintain certain certifications on our water treatment plant operators. And we got to go elsewhere to get personnel that can fulfill our, the regulatory requirements there. I imagine the Personnel Committee might also have a report on that. We also talked about a higher, potential higher in the Road Department. It was our feeling that if that's not a, a general fund funded position, it's not implicated by the constraint in the budget ordinance that prohibits hiring during the hiring freeze, because that hiring freeze doesn't extend to utility funded positions. And then we went into some more in-depth discussion about Socrata, which is one of the products that we have looked at for exposing our budget and transaction information to council members, but also to the public. We are going to get a presentation from them here in the next couple of weeks. It appears that the pricing scheme that they have is somewhat fluid and subject to negotiation. There are several modules that would fulfill the requirement that we put in our budget ordinance of reporting back to council on budget and transactions and staff salaries. But they also have a performance metrics module that looks pretty interesting. So we asked that that be included as well and we provided feedback to Mr. Hoagland on the PowerPoint that Socrata had prepared for him. So we didn't, we didn't think it provided very much information by itself. But they are also going to take a sample of our data and apparently they're going to load it up into their platform so that we can play with it a little bit. And that's particularly interesting. And we haven't seen that on the committee yet, but we expect, I think that it'll just get rolled out to council at the same time that they bring forward their presentation. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on that? All right, we'll move on to item 2C, which is our Personnel Committee report.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Thank you. So council member Young and I attended the Personnel Committee meeting. And Mr. McDougall serves on the finance, so he chose to opt out just so we wouldn't have any kind of running meeting. Yeah, we discussed the water plant, hiring the L4 operators and kind of dove into the reasons behind why we need to have that position and, and kind of a pipeline of capable folks who have that designation, especially when we go for the higher capacity for the water, which it was designed for, but will require the Health Department to approve for that higher amount. It, you know, it made sense and they're really sought after jobs because of somewhat of a retirement issues. So, you know, if people are looking for a new career, it looks like there's a lot of openings and we've, we've lost some, some people to other municipalities. So trying to kind of address that and make sure that we can keep those L4 operators going. And it made a lot of sense. The other thing we discussed were the street crew, because a couple of those street crew guys ended up going, moving over to the fiber department to help with that and just kind of backfilling those positions. We had a couple of questions, I think they, they're going to get back to us about what, you know, how that's going to look to have those positions filled, either a couple of full-time or a full-time and maybe some seasonal until we get back on our feet financially with COVID. And then finally, the last one that was brought up was the GIS. And we have one person kind of categorizing and following up and putting all of this information about our every kind of line and item and kind of a physical feature, right, of each kind of parcel within the city of Anacortes. It's really intensive and there's a bunch of maps with overlays that you can check out that are very helpful to professionals and, and community members. He's doing, there's one person doing the entire job. The Public Works feels that there might be a way to add an additional employee in lieu of some consulting fees or having a consultant come in from out. So he's getting creative and feels that that could be a, a long-term position. So that sounded really interesting to us too. I think that's pretty much it. Mr. Young, do you have anything to add?
No, absolutely. You did a great job of describing it all. I think that the real challenge that we are facing as a city, particularly as it comes to employees, is that, as you said, as people retire and or move on for whatever reason, we have to be competitive. And that's the challenge. And then how do we have people in the pipeline such that they are cross-trained in a way that we can ensure that the city continues to run efficiently? So, you know, those are the things that we're dealing with in the decision as to whether or not, you know, it's something that we think is doable for the city, given the revenues that we have, and creatively thinking of ways to work around it and work with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Great report. And finally, our Public Safety Committee met. I think...
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Carter?
So we talked last week and we were talking about there's a grant opportunity for the fire department to hire up to five new firefighters and the grant would pay their salary for three years. And what we were trying to discuss is some kind of plan for the city, if it would be feasible, because after those three years were up, then the city would be responsible for then paying for their salaries, which could be up to about $750,000 additional forever, as long as there are firefighters in our town. And I believe that that's going to come to council soon with some kind of plan, finance plan, to see if it's something that we could move forward with or not.
Anything else on that?
Mayor Gear?
Yeah, Ms. Cleveland?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Carter kind of covered it. Time is of the essence with this situation. It, it came out of the fact that we decided sprinklers didn't make sense for all buildings across the board over a certain square footage. And this, it's a FEMA safer, FEMA program and it's called the Safer Program, but it opened up for application February 8th and it closes March 12th. So this year, they're offering 100% of the salary, of the salaries for, for these firefighter positions. And if we want to apply, we, we need to kind of get moving on it. You know, we had some really good discussions with Mr. Kennedy and Chief Gans, who has a lot of perspective from a variety of different organizations. The, the thing that kind of we kept going around and roundabout is, you know, do we, do we, we know we probably need more firefighters, but do we hire now because this funding's available and this opportunity? Or do we want to kind of study the risks, acceptable risks, kind of determine staffing and identify our needs and come up with kind of a long-term strategic plan? And do we do that one before the other or in tandem? And, and, you know, Mr. Hoagland, we kind of look at him, right? Because after the three years are up, how do we, how do we figure out how to pay for those additional positions? We don't want to take a risk of applying and then refusing the funding because that could put us in a less desirable, desirable position in the future. But I'm hoping that we can, I know Mr. Kennedy's here. Mr. Miller had some really good questions. Hopefully, Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Gans can come back and discuss that a little bit further next week.
Well, I think they're going to join in now because this is an opportunity. I also, before you start, Jack, I wanted to mention, we also talked about the option of maybe asking for funding for three firefighters. And that would, that would secure one, one, one of our fire stations for that imminent rescue situation. And that might be an easier thing to fund because it would be '22, '23, '24. It would be in the year 2025 that we'd have to come up with funding. So that was just another thought. But I'm going to turn it over to Jack now and then Chief Gans, because they both brought excellent thoughts to the table. Go ahead, Jack.
Mayor, thank you very much. And both Mr. Carter and Ms. Cleveland McGrath actually summarized the discussion very well. And like she said, this is a limited opportunity to put the grant application in. What that would do, and whether we went with the three firefighters or the five firefighters, is they would pay for that 100% for three years. And it would be the city's responsibility to cover the salaries beyond that time period. There is a lot of work that is involved in putting together the application with all the supportive documentation. And we're more than happy to do it with the support of council, if that's the direction we want to go. As Chief Gans also mentioned, we also need to do a longer-term standard of cover document that would involve city council and other stakeholders that would determine exactly the number of firefighters that we want on a daily basis and balance that with the risk that this community experiences. I'm more than happy to answer any specific questions. It will take easily the full three weeks that we have left to get this grant application in. There is no guarantee that we would be approved for it. There is about $355 million that's available through this grant program. They do do the grant every year, but it's not always 100% and it's not always the same amount that's being given out. So that does vary year to year. We're actually working on the 2020 federal funding year for this particular grant.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
All right. Great synopsis, Ms. Cleveland McGrath and Mr. Carter, truly very informative. And also, Mr. Kennedy, just a couple of questions. It seems like this is a great thing. Must we, you may not have the answer, but I'm, I'm just trying to get some clarity. If we apply for the funds, do we have to use it immediately? Meaning, you know, does the grant allow for a, a bit of a leeway in time in bringing on all of the staffing that we agreed to? That's the first question. And then the second question is, even though that there's funding this year, and I think you indicated that there's a possibility, that funding is a rolling basis next year, there may be funding. Could you sort of give us a clue as to what it's been like these last couple of years? Because then if it's consistent and if it's not something we can do this year, we can hope for next year. But if this lump sum of money that's available this year far eclipses any of the past year, it sort of speaks to the urgency of us trying to maximize it. And I guess that's what I'm looking at. One is, can we, if we decide to take advantage of this money and if we awarded it, if we chose three or five employees, do we have to hire them within three months of receiving the money? Or can we wait and stagger that out such that after the three years of funding for those employees, we're further along and we can better determine if it's affordable for us or not? Thank you.
To answer your first question, Mr. Young, is yes, we would need to spend it all at once. If we are awarded the grant based on our application, then we would start into a performance period of 36 months. And so if we didn't spend it in the first three months, say, we would not be able to extend that in additional three months beyond the performance period. With regards to the...
Just to make sure I'm clear, when you say performance of 36 months, what you're saying, once the grant is given to us, we have 36 months to execute what we said and it just runs out either way?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
That is correct. With regards to the second question that you had, is yes, this is a rolling program. It has been for the last probably 10 to 15 years that I am aware of. It does vary a little bit, but for the most part fairly consistent on the amounts that are available. What is different this year is that they are offering 100% of the wages and benefits for the entire 36 months. Where in the past, the first year would be 100%, the second year might drop to 80% and the third year might drop to 50%. The other part of it is, in the past few years, because we had gone through a recession and then as we were coming out of the recession, the priority grants were given to those that were rehiring firefighters that were laid off. Whereas now, those appear to have all been hired back or they've gone on to other ways to, to fund those positions. And now we're back into a cycle where, at least for this year, they're looking at creating new positions as a priority.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kennedy. You answered my question superbly.
So before I close this conversation tonight, Chief Gans, did you have anything to offer? Add?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Yeah, I just wanted to add that the whole reason we're bringing it to you is because it is an opportunity that's come up. In all likelihood, like Chief Kennedy said, it will be offered next year, but it's not a guarantee. We are dealing with federal government and, you know, they do make budget adjustments from time to time. The other thing is, we just want to point out that with our current staffing, we don't have the ability at times to meet the imminent rescue criteria of two in and one out. And so, you know, concurrently, we do feel like there needs to be a standard of the cover-in-response document that is collaborative, could be collaboratively done with the city council, fire department and different stakeholders, which would include the community, to identify what the risks are in the future, you know, in the future, and what our current staffing levels are and what our needs are in the future. And in concurrent, that should be done no matter what and possibly concurrently with getting these safer grant positions. I just would bring you back to the biggest need right now is we do have some exposure as to not being able to meet that two-in-one-out criteria. And I'm confident that no matter what, you know, where we are in a year from now, we're still going to be dealing with the fact that you're going to need three to five firefighters just to get one station up to meet that standard. So I think that kind of sums it up.
And I, and I know tonight we're doing this a little out of norm, but because we're under a time constraint, I wanted you to hear this, about this sooner than later. And I can connect with all of you over the next week or so and get your input on whether we should even start this application process. Because we're down to about three weeks to do it. So, but, so with that, I'll, I will, I will move on, but because normally we don't add something on the committee report, but it was really time is of the essence and I wanted to hear you to hear. to hear, you to hear it.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Walton.
Thank you. I just have one question. Can you remind me, when we had our budget discussions, how many open fire department positions we have right now that we've identified?
Jack, can you answer that?
We don't have any open positions right now. We have one person that is on an extended sick leave and we don't know what the status of that is gonna be long-term, but all positions are currently filled without exception.
It was the police department that had the openings.
Right, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, well, thank you, everyone. At this time, we'll move on to our, to public comment.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Walton?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that the Traffic Safety Committee actually met this morning and...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, we're not on the agenda. We, we sneaked in last minute here. But it was Councilmember Carter and I, as well as staff from Public Works and Rachel Rowe from the county, who's in charge of the Gwemas Ferry, was at our meeting because we were talking about parking issues on Sixth Street, particularly between H Avenue and J Avenue. And there have been some residents complaints that people are parking there for a very long time. So anyway, we're beginning the discussion on what to do there, if there will be resident-only parking on a block or two, or how best to handle that. So Officer Naibo is doing some research and we'll get back to us. So we'll be moving forward on the best, the best approach to that problem. We also talked briefly, some constituents have expressed concerns about Kansas Avenue and the Rock Ridge neighborhood and why is that not a completed corridor that people can drive? And we heard from City Engineer Eric Sharaback that that is being explored. They're going to do a scope of work and estimate the cost and put that project in a future capital facilities project. Mainly, it's a funding issue. It's going to cost millions of dollars and there isn't an opportunity for state or federal funding. So it's a money thing. But anyway, that is being, that is being looked at and explored. And the last thing that I have is that the tsunami signs that have been done by the county are almost done. There are a couple more to add and it's just for an abundance of caution that we will have those. No one's thinking there's one coming right now and we'll have lots of warning time, but those signs will be seen around town now. And I think that's it.
Thanks. Okay, then I'm gonna move to item three, which is public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to talk to the council this evening? And I don't see any hands up. So at this time, I will move on to agenda item number four, which is our consent agenda, which includes our minutes, approval of claims, ordinance 3084, repealing our ordinance 3082, establishing the four and a half million dollar line of credit at Savvy Bank, resolution 3018, waiving the state competitive bid requirements for purchase of the Guterman Zone Scan 820 and Aqua Scan 620L leak detection. And I open for your comments.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
I'd, I'd like to pull item 4D.
All right. Do you have a motion on the rest?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, exception of item 4D.
All right.
Okay.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Cleveland McGrath to approve consent agenda of four items A through C, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close, same sign. Motion carries. Item 4D, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Gear. I guess, you know, the only thing, I just wanted to bring up the issue once again about, in this case, I understand that this is a necessary thing, waiving the state competitive bid requirements for the purchase for this particular project. Again, I know that we indicated in prior council meetings that we would try to work with the state and we came up with some solutions toward, you know, waiving competitive bidding process without knowing a price. And that's always been my sort of pet peeve. And I understand that we have a solution coming. I just wanted to voice the, the importance of us continuing to work for a solution toward going to competitive bid without, non-competitive bid without having a price that we can look forward to as a city and anticipate. That's all I really wanted to put back out there again, because I think right now we were, there was some discussion about narrowing things down to the top three and then taking a harder look to see if any of those providers can provide the service. In this case, this is very different and I recognize that, but I wanted to make that point. With that, I make a motion that we approve item 4D as written and that's it.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
I'll second Mr. Young's motion, but then I'd like to ask him to have some questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Since we do have staff here invited to talk about this item, I, I would like to hear a little bit more about what exactly this item is, whether we've had it before, if it's serving a new need or an existing need, but whatever else Ms. Neves would like to tell us about it.
Okay, staff, Brian or Terry, can you help us with this?
Yes, Mayor, Brian McDaniel here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Give access to the camera so we can see you. There you go.
Try to get the light so it doesn't blind you too bad.
Oh, no, it's good. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you for having us. Yes, a little bit of background on the Zone Scan. This is a piece of leak detection equipment that has a, a technology component to it. And what this does is it coincides with our existing leak detection equipment that we effectively go out and we have a tool that we put headphones on and listen to sounds in the water mains. This is in addition to that equipment that we place sporadically throughout the distribution system to listen to the pipes, to listen for those rogue leaks. So it's an add-on to our existing equipment. And that's the basis for the sole source of this. So it's a, it's a piece of equipment that we set out and we're, it's actually mobile. And we set it 24 hours a day and we're able to work across our water distribution system in zones and listen to different pieces, looking for leaks and reduce water flows. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I think that's one of the best justifications for sole source procurement. Can you tell us what the order of magnitude of that cost that we're looking at is?
And I'm going to have to ask Terry on the exact amount because I don't have the exact amount at my fingertips with me. Terry, do you have that amount for council?
It's approximately $35,000. And that gives us two pieces of equipment that will, like Brian says, add on to the addition, the existing equipment that we have right now. One of them being the Zone Scan, which allows us to correlate with valves, putting correlators into valves and allows us to listen to the pipe so that we can find the leak. And then we have Real Time, which is 620. And that allows us to pinpoint exactly where the leak is within a foot. And we have already during a, kind of a dog and pony show through Guterman, we've already found a leak that was somewhat haunting us for the last few years because we could not find the source of it and ended up finding the source of it within a day.
Oh, my goodness, that's wonderful.
Well, and for $35,000, that sounds like money very well spent.
$35,000?
Right.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you said 75,000.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Council, any other questions? Do you have a motion and a second on the floor?
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Walton?
Thank you. I also understand that there is another leak detection and security system that we're looking at as a city. And this will, and I think that was going to be about $50,000. It's a Crowley product, I believe. And I'm wondering how this augments that or this, does this replace that? What's the relationship between this and the Crowley technology that we're also looking at?
Can you help us, Mr. Neves?
Yes, so completely different leak detection components. One of them is for, it, it actually uses a fiber line in order to detect leaks in a large portion of water pipe, like the transmission line where we have the fiber pipe and pipe from Crowley. It's called an ISM system. And that also gives us a security. So we can actually put fiber around like our booster stations and reservoirs so that we can determine if there's a breach. So it's a completely separate component and both of them are extremely necessary.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Neves. I'm glad to get that background.
You're welcome.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
If I recall correctly, though, that other component that is not the subject of the agenda tonight is, is really more like $500,000. Is that right?
I believe so, yes. That is pretty expensive.
Yeah.
Mr. McDaniels, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to echo what Terry confirmed is, yes, the Crowley is, I think we budgeted in the capital facilities plan about $500,000 for the Crowley, which is the Crowley listening device. And one other point to support also, if you think in terms of the, the fiber line and the Crowley technology, it lends itself more toward the transmission main, the larger mains, to where the Zone Scan helps our field crews actually be a little bit mobile where there's not fiber installed in the water pipes. So hopefully that helps support that.
Oh, that was really helpful. Thank you. And have Fred send you guys all the time and you can give us tutorials. We appreciate that. Someone that understands how everything works. It's really helpful. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Walters. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. So now we're gonna move on to item five, other business. And the first item is item 5A. This is open for public comment. And this is the Anacortes Family Center Agreement. This is a discussion with possible action. Ms. Swetnam is presenting tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm going to share my screen here.
I think we have Mr. Johnson with us too, who is the executive director of the Anacortes Family Center. So at some time during the evening, if we need to ask him something, he's with us. Go ahead, Garcia.
Great, thank you. Can you all see my screen, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So tonight, what's in your pocket is a funding agreement between the Anacortes Family Center and the city. And so we are going to look at the background of that agreement. We're gonna look at the reason for the agreement and some of the key terms. So the backgrounds, this, this, this funding agreement comes at the end of a lot of steps that have, that have happened to get the qualifying local tax into place to support affordable housing in Anacortes.
Mr. Walters?
Sorry to interrupt, but I, I know that there are probably people still watching at home. I'm wondering if we can reverse the display settings here so that we can see full screen the slides.
Oh, you are not seeing the full screen version. Okay, my apologies.
I think that's under display settings. There.
There you go. How about that?
Thank you, Walter.
Much better, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Walters. So on, on November 4th of 2019, council adopted resolution 2061, which authorized a ballot proposition to levy a 1/10th of 1% sales tax increase to be used to support affordable and supportive housing. And that we talk about as a qualifying local tax. On February 11, the Anacortes voters approved the ballot proposition by 55%. And then on June 1st of 2020, council adopted ordinance 3071, which elected, in addition to the qualifying local tax, we have the opportunity to collect, collect the full sales tax credit authorized by state law at the rate of 0.0146. So in July of 2020, the city began collecting that full sales tax credit. Based on revenue projections, the, the estimated annual revenue is $654,000. So at the time that the plan was put into place to collect the qualifying local tax and the, and the full authorized amount, the, the idea was to fully fund three projects. There was one project with a price tag of $3 million for the city's contribution for the Anacortes Family Center. And then there are two projects that the Anacortes Housing Authority intends to afford with using those funds. And so there was, the, the, the percentages were at the time articulated as 46 and 54%. But really, that was just the breakdown of, of, you know, what the division was based on the full funded amount. So the reason for this particular agreement is that the Anacortes Family Center plans to begin construction of their project. And that's the conceptual drawing there. The project is called The Landing. And it will be a new building behind Island Hospital that will include 20 apartments and it will include childcare on the first floor. ASC, in order to fund the upfront construction costs, they're, they plan to borrow funds from Banner Bank and then use the proceeds from the sales tax to, to make payments on the loan, make the debt service payment. So Banner Bank has requested this funding agreement between the city and the family center so that it can have some security and to provide evidence of what the projected income will be under the affordable housing tax revenue expectations. So the key terms of the agreement, the, the purpose again is to secure funding to allow the construction of the project. The tax proceeds, the, the way that, so early on, there was a discussion between the housing authority and the family center and the city that looked at sort of front-loading some of the funding for the family center because they were nearly shovel-ready on their project while the housing authority still had a little bit of work to do. So the, the, the plan in this agreement is to provide half of the proceeds from the, the affordable housing tax revenue to the Anacortes Family Center for construction of the project. We were clear that the, the numbers, the revenue projections are just that, they're projections. So there isn't a guarantee of a certain level of outcome, of income for the family center. But, but we did, we did look at what the revenue projection should be and, and that was attached to the, to the agreement as Exhibit A. The agreement makes it clear that the family center will make a big difference in payments based on revenue projections and any amounts actually collected. And then once the city's portion of the project is fully funded at that $3 million amount, then the payments for that project will cease. We also put some language in the agreement that says that the city won't commit any of these funds to other projects than the three projects originally anticipated, the family center project and the two housing authority projects, until the city's share of, of all of those projects has been fully funded. And so one, you know, a couple of things that the, that Banner Bank was concerned about related to assignment. So the city consents to the assignment of payments to that Banner Bank in case there's an issue and they default. The state law requirements, we also included language that the family center agrees to use, to only use the funds for the project that meets the requirements for the use of them, mainly that they're used for affordable housing projects. And then finally, Exhibit A describes the project itself and includes the revenue projections and, and the payments that are anticipated to be made. So that is the overview of the agreement and I am happy to answer any questions that anyone has. Staff is recommending approval tonight.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
I have just a couple of questions and I need some clarity. And I will say that I had a fantastic conversation with Mr. Johnson this afternoon. And as always, you know, just a tremendous resource. know, just a tremendous resource of information and clarity as to the purpose. If I recall correctly, we had a discussion about how and what these revenues may be used for in the proposal going forward, I think about a year or so ago. And I'm very supportive of this project for the Anacortes Family Center, as well as the other two projects, I really am. But with that said, my concern is that, as I expressed over a year ago, that in allocating all of the resources that's coming in to three projects, which commits us to almost eight, 12 years, yeah, 10 to 12 years, of no ability to even ponder or consider any other projects that may come along that may be worthy at the moment. I think my worry is the assumption that these three projects are the only things we're willing to look at over these next years. And so, I think, if I'm recalling correctly, Mr. Walters, you and I had a conversation about this, and at that time, it was, I thought we had come to a consensus that part of the revenue, just a small portion, would be in reserve. It doesn't stop us from using it for either of the projects that may become shovel-ready and moving forward, but it allows us to be able to consider new ideas that may come to the table that may be even better than the three projects we've allocated these resources for. I guess my concern basically boils down to, I'm concerned about a 12-year obligation where we can't consider anything else. I'm totally in support of the Anacortes Family Center project, possibly, and also, I'm in support of the other two projects, but what bothers me is that we are allocating absolutely all of the resources that's coming for three projects without any consideration that something else may come along. And I have some follow-up questions, but I really want to hear your thoughts on that, and how we could deal with that. Is that, how do we do?
Yeah, it's a good question, and it speaks to some of the key terms of this agreement. So first of all, there's a couple of points. Initially, when this plan was first discussed, the idea was that the city would guarantee a certain level of revenue for the parties. You know, in other words, the city would underwrite the risk of a shortfall in tax revenues. And when you're talking about the reserve amount, that was intended to be the insurance policy, to be able to deal with the peaks and valleys that are, you know, that happen with sales tax revenue. That plan changed when the economy changed, when COVID happened. And so, what we were able to do was, rather than having that reserve amount, which I don't think, my recollection was that was never intended to be spent on any other projects, but it was intended to be an amount that was held back in case there was a shortfall in sales tax revenue, to be able to make up the payments that the city was underwriting. So, rather than doing that, what we've done instead was to say, we aren't going to guarantee a dollar figure every month, but there isn't then a need to hold any money in reserves. So that's one point. The other point is that because of that, when the Family Center went to go get their funding, the bank sends, obviously, their funding request to their underwriters, and their underwriters evaluate risk. And so, this term in the agreement that said that the city won't fund any other projects with this sales tax revenue until these three projects were fully funded, was a requirement that the bank put forward in order for the Family Center to get their funding. So we could certainly go back and push back on that, but I'm concerned that we would then either have to be in a position of guaranteeing a certain dollar figure, which I don't think is budgeted, to be able to make that income stream work, or that could potentially jeopardize their funding. So I think it's a really good point, and I think that maybe the time to have incorporated that into the planning piece of it was when we were adopting the sales tax plan to fund these three projects. And at this point, I think it would be potentially, it would potentially interfere with their ability to secure funding.
And I hear your point, and I totally understand, but my recollection wasn't quite exactly the way you recall it. What I recall specifically asking the same question in our prior conversations before council, because what I proposed at the time was, what I questioned at the time was, if there were other projects that came along, not big projects, but maybe smaller projects, some new ideas that, some new ideas that may come to the table within this 12-year period, it webs us to these three projects. I am not, in no way saying that the Anacortes Family Center project is not one we want to go with. I absolutely support it, and I absolutely support the funding of it, I really do. My question really is about how the decision to allocate all of what funds come in through that process to these three projects. I understand that there's some work that needs to be done on the other two projects, I understand that, but my concern is for a 12-year commitment of absolutely every single dollar that comes in to three projects. I struggle with that, and I think in my recollection of our conversation, Mr. Walters pointed out to me, and I'm sure he will weigh in at some point, that there was a small amount of reserve, which doesn't mean that we don't give it or use it with either one, either of the projects, it just allows us yearly to make that determination, just in case a project of merit comes along and can use that bit of funding. In no way do I want to jeopardize anything for the Family Center, of course, but I'm just saying, in my recollection of our conversation and moving this forward, that was part of what I was sort of expecting, and this is the first time I've had a chance to sort of see what the results of this agreement, because I'm not on those committees.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't see that the records of what we had in place at the time that we adopted it indicated that. That may have been something that council discussed. If that's something that council as a whole would like to set up, we would probably have to go back to the drawing board a little bit on this funding agreement.
So, Darcy, didn't we not present these three projects to the citizens when they voted on the sales tax?
Yes, we did.
That's, I, that's to me, and I rarely interrupt, but to me, that's, the voters voted for these projects, it wasn't us.
No, 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 they did, and I'm agreeing with that. And these three projects were the projects that were brought up in the conversations that we were having about it. That is not what I'm speaking to. What I'm speaking to is that, just a question of allocating every single dime to these three projects for 12 years, that's the question that came up last time as well. I totally agree, the voters knew that these were projects that we were interested in, that we would pursue, and that we would use resources for affordable housing. That's the broad brush. And, you know, again, I'm not opposed to us moving forward, I'm just voicing that this question came up in our prior discussions, because I brought it up, and I brought it up having these same concerns then.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Walters?
I would like to respond to a couple of those points. First of all, I think the mayor is, makes the best point, which is that we pitched this to the voters as construction of these three projects, not as anything else, and it's most important to me, and I hope the rest of us, that we keep our promises there. It is theoretically possible, under the statute, that we could collect this money and dole it out on a yearly basis, or to other projects, or reserve some of it and allocate some of that each year to other projects. But at the time that we got into this, I think our thinking was, what we really want to do is build housing now. And actually, I don't, I didn't anticipate that we would have a full year delay, but no one did, and that's largely the result of the pandemic. Previously, we were planning, as Ms. Swetnam mentions, to hold back 25% of the revenue, but the reason for that was not to allocate that money to other projects, the reason was to hold it in reserve to level out the troughs in sales tax revenue, so that we could guarantee a fixed amount to the Housing Authority and the Family Center, because we anticipated that their financiers would require a fixed amount guarantee. Since they're not, that means that we can give them more money sooner, and assuming that we do better in sales tax revenue than the projections, that means we'll be free sooner of these obligations, and then we can talk about the next project. It will still be eight, 10 years out, you know, depending on how strong the economy is and how much sales tax revenue comes in. But I don't, I don't really see any benefit to spending this money on other projects sooner, because the amount that would be available would just not be very substantial. It wouldn't be enough to build another project, unless what we're talking about is not funding one of the, or more of the three projects, but I see some head shaking. So, yeah, I just don't anticipate there being enough money to build any more housing until these projects are funded. I think we can spend it on things other than building housing, but I certainly didn't want to. I wanted to get housing built, and that is what I think everybody sold to the voters, too. This agreement is a little different than the original proposal, but I think it's different in a good way, that speeds things up, and it's different, basically, because the banks were more flexible than we anticipated. So, I think this is the right approach at this point.
If I could correct you one thing, though, in our conversation, I totally agree with you. I think this is shovel-ready, is ready to go. I think it's a wonderful project, much needed, great use of funds. I totally agree with all of that. Again, though, but I think when you and I were sitting next to each other, I brought this same point up, and, you know, really, although it wasn't a council move, I guess what I was anticipating in your conversation with me, Mr. Walters, was that we said that, you pointed out that there was a reserve that could be for some project to come along. I'm not saying a big project, could be a minor thing. And, but it was just the fact that there was some reserve where we did not have a 12-year commitment, and that was my concern, and my concern was delayed then. I guess what I'm speaking to is, as I look at this agreement, which is a wonderful agreement, I'm not seeing that, and when that wasn't there, my due diligence required me to bring it back up, and that to see what the answers to why that change wasn't there. And, you know, I still struggle with it. I think there are three worthy projects, I can support them, it's what we need, it's the best use of money. We committed to the taxpayers that we would fund these projects, but we did not commit that every single dime of this revenues would go only for those two projects, and that was my concern. A 12-year commitment is a long time. So, with that said, I'm okay, unless there's any other way to be done. I think one of the suggestions was, we could hold some of the funds and wait until they're ready to be used, but I don't want to hold up this project. I think that this project is so deserving and so needed, we've waited a long time in Anacortes for this to come forward. I think it's a Herculean lift that you guys have done, and the Family Center and all those supporters, and so I will support it. But I wanted to be very clear that we did have this discussion, I brought it up last time, and when I didn't see it in this language, that was what I wanted to question. Thank you.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Walters?
Well, and, Mr. Young, on my screen, we're still sitting right next to each other. But maybe we were talking past each other a little bit. I don't think that we anticipated having extra money until these projects were funded, because even though we were going to reserve 25% of the funds, we were reserving it for the purpose of filling in the troughs in revenue, so that we may have misunderstood each other.
I'm very happy, I'm really very happy about this whole process, and I think it's something that I will support.
Thank you. And many other council members like to make any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor Gere, two things. I plan to abstain from voting, because I do serve on the Family Center Board, so I want to make that really clear. But my other question is just to kind of follow up with Mr. Young, and this isn't specifically to the Family Center, or for this funding, but if for some reason we exceed our revenue projections, then those funds would then be available at the end of the 10 years for other potential projects. That was my understanding, is that still accurate?
That's correct, yeah. As soon as these projects, the city's portion of these projects is fully funded, then there's no longer an obligation on the city's part to continue to spend the funds in those places. So you're correct, if the sales tax revenues exceed the projected amounts, then we'll pay these projects off early, and then be able to spend those funds elsewhere.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Mr. Carter?
I just wanted to voice that I had the same concerns that Mr. Young did, but they got mostly answered when his were.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Walters?
So, not to complicate this further, except to complicate it just a little bit further, I have heard the, sort of the opposite concern of Mr. Young and Mr. Carter's in the community, and that is that the reserved tax credit that is a portion of this funds is time-limited, it ends, I think, after 20 years. The sales tax that the voters approved does not end after 20 years. But we pitched this to the voters as funding these three projects, and after these three projects are built, are we simply to retain the 1/10 of 1% sales tax into the future forever, or should we terminate it? Now, that date is, you know, 10, 12, maybe longer into the future, maybe it's 20 years into the future that these projects are funded. But it seems to me that because we pitched three specific projects to the voters, we ought to have some kind of mechanism built in here to revisit this at the time at which those projects are fully funded. It used to be a little bit further into the future, because we were holding back that 25% in case of reduced revenue, but now my sense is it's going to be a little bit sooner in the future. It's still a ways out, I'd inquired with MRSC as to a mechanism for this, and they didn't identify one, but assumedly we could adopt an ordinance. It's just a little bit of a flexible threshold as to when the projects would actually be done. But I think we ought to keep that in mind as well, that actually, collecting more of this money and funding other projects would be a little, or maybe a lot contrary, to what we told the voters we were going to do with it. Even though that's 12 years out, and it's probably some other council that will make those decisions, maybe we should write it down someplace.
Good point.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Swetnam?
I was just going to say, you know, maybe, maybe one way to address that is to have some sort of mechanism for reporting back to council on, you know, the percentages of these projects that have been funded, and, you know, we can certainly talk about that on a staff level, and, you know, maybe that's something that gets brought up through, you know, I don't know if the budget process is the right way, but some sort of update to council so that triggers that discussion in the future.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Young?
Yeah, just for clarity purposes, I just wanted to say that absolutely, I agree that we pitched these three projects to the taxpayers. My contention wasn't that we did not pitch these projects to the taxpayers, my contention was that there was supposed to be a reserve amount that we just kept, just in case that there were additional projects to come along, not big projects, maybe small, but just that it would allow us the ability to consider ideas that may be superb, but committing to a 12-year without looking, and the ability to look at other projects, I think was something I had I think was something I, I had reservations about. And to Mr. Johnson's credit, he really did point out that, um, there are other methodologies with which the city can, um, do additional projects. And so with that, I'm okay with this. But I wanted to be clear that my reservation wasn't anything to do with these, uh, three projects. And that I understand that taxpayers did say that we would support these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we want to continue this? Or do you want to take action this evening? What, what are your thoughts?
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I move approval of the agreement as presented.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Mr. Walters and second by Ms. Moulton. Any additional comments or discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Stained.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Really good discussion. Thank you, Mr. Young. All right, so we'll move on then to our next item. And it is the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's annual appointment for 2021. And Mr. Meesmer, are you doing this presentation?
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you very much. Mayor, council members in the audience. So every year, we come before council to reappoint and appoint new members of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. This year, um, four of the existing members, Mark Leoni, Russ Olivier, Hoteliers, Eric Shore, and Andy Stewart, will have agreed to, uh, continue work on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as reappointments. Ms. Carla Locke and Pam Audat have left the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And so we have two volunteers that have stepped up. Kripa Patel, manager and part owner of the Anacortes Inn, and Jennifer Mann of Tides. And this Jennifer Mann is also an Island Hospital Voultation Board Member, and so would be eligible for receipt of lodging tax funds. So that would, uh, fill the requirements of our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. We're looking forward to our new members. And we are also, uh, we also have a meeting scheduled for the eighteenth of February, which I believe is Thursday. So I, I appreciate the council's consideration of the appointees.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
Um, unless there's any discussion, I move to approve the reappointment of Matt Miller as Chair and Mark Leoni, Eric Shore, Russ Oliver, and Andy Stewart as members of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and appoint Jennifer Mann and Kripa Patel as new committee members to represent the city in the review and recommendation of projects that encourage tourism in Anacortes.
Who seconded that? I couldn't hear. Did someone second that? No?
I will second that.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Moulton. Excuse me, I thought someone did, and I was mishearing. Um, any other discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Meesmer. Um, now we're on to our final item from tonight's agenda. It's item five C. It's open for a public comment, and it's access fiber internet update. This is a discussion item only this evening. Ms. Shu.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Go ahead and bring it, and, uh, members of the public. I'll go ahead and bring up my presentation. Are you seeing the full screen? Please send give the, the February twenty-twenty-one presentation on access Anacortes fiber internet. I like to start every month with our G-Pond customer count and revenue because, um, you now have a full year of growth of our network. From last March, we had nine customers in service to this February where we have five hundred and seventy-five customers in service. And you can see that our total revenue has grown from just over eleven hundred dollars a month to almost forty thousand dollars a month. So we are seeing nice growth in our network. Um, in terms of looking at our customer orders, we have, this says eighty-six. I'm sorry, it got cut off. It's, we have four hundred and eighty-six residential customers and eighty-nine commercial customers, um, bringing us to a total of five hundred and seventy-five customers. I wanted to point out that this month, we have broken down, um, broken out the, the areas. So we have the Commercial Business District, Old Town, and Avenue in the twenty-twenty aerial areas. Those four areas make up our current, um, network service area. And we've also broken out the, the West End where we'll be providing service, uh, by the end of this year and the remainder of the city. So in the West End, we already have three hundred and seventy-nine, um, signups for, for orders. And our current market share in the four areas where we provide service is at thirty-three point seven percent. So we're seeing some nice growth there, um, with three hundred and twenty-eight signups in our aerial area, uh, but a total of twelve hundred and ninety-six potential customers. So we're seeing some, some nice growth there, and those orders do continue to, uh, arrive on a daily basis. This is a scatter plot chart that we have looked at earlier. Um, but I thought it'd be helpful for you to see an updated map. The red indicate, um, the, the different orders that we have. Um, and this is the West End where we'll be, um, expanding in twenty-twenty-one. Um, and then the green here are our current service areas. And the, the green dots indicate that people are in service. The yellow dots, and I know it's probably a little bit hard to, to see that closely, the yellow indicate that they are scheduled, um, and that we have them scheduled to, to go in and do those installations. Pink means that we've done the inside work, and orange means we've done the outside work. So this is just a, a system that CJ uses to, to help plan, um, and then methodically get out to our different service areas and ensure we have a, a very kind of smooth system for our installers when they were, are going, um, about their day with the planned installations. So this, this is our twenty-twenty service area. Um, and we've updated the map in a, on our webpage where this provides additional detail. So on our website, if you click on this map, you'll be able to, um, go in and get additional detail to find out if your, um, home or business is in our current service area. Now, this is identified as the twenty-twenty service area, but this is where, um, all the service areas that we had in place as, as the end of, uh, twenty-twenty, we're still putting customers into service that have orders in those areas. Uh, we have two hundred and six customer orders that are in queue for service. And currently, we, um, are scheduled out through mid-March. So people can know and plan that when we, uh, schedule that, that we'll be there, um, to, to get them into service. I think that the, I've done a lot of questions about kind of the when and the where are you getting to, to my neighborhood? So I thought I would take some time just to, to go through our network expansion and what our plans are. So we are currently, um, we'll just kind of go, um, through the chart. The West End is what we are calling West of Annacopper Mine Road. We'll be passing approximately two thousand three hundred and seventy-five premises in that area. And the, currently in twenty-twenty-one, our expectation is that we will have the design construction and be installing customers this year. Um, the installations will continue into early twenty-twenty-two because this is such a large area. And the funding source is the Savvy Bank line of credit, um, that was up to four point five million dollars. The next area is the East of A Avenue, and that is backfilling our current service areas where we will pass one thousand eight hundred and fifteen premises. The timing on this is really dependent on whether or not the Economic Development Administration grant is approved or not. It was presented to their committee last week on Monday. And we expect to hear by the end of next week whether we were successful with that or not. If the grant is approved, that in twenty-twenty-one, we will do the, uh, complete the design work and begin the, um, the detailed federal process for procurement and contracting. So that construction will probably move into twenty-twenty-two, and that's when we will get to installations. If the grant is denied, this entire project will be something that we will move towards our twenty-twenty-two, um, um, business, um, business model. And the design, the construction and installations would all take place in twenty-twenty-two. There's some questions about why did you move this area? Um, we thought that this was going to be the area that you were looking at in twenty-twenty-one. And we found that we were able to apply for the Economic Development Administration grant. When an EDA grant is being reviewed, it requires that, um, that we're able to show that and demonstrate that there are going to be private jobs that are created as a result of that. The biggest area that we had in the city that had private industries still remaining, um, to be filled in areas that we could grow and expand was in this area. And so that's why we chose this area to apply for the grant form. It wasn't something that would just easily transition over to the, the West End, um, for that. So I just wanted to try and just, uh, clarify why we moved the, in kind of projects. And we're trying to be nimble to make sure that we were, um, continuing to move forward with the project, but that we weren't going to be held up by whether or not we received the, the EDA grant because that process has taken a long time to, to get to the point where it's actually being reviewed.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
So i- in addition to those couple of points, I think the other, the other important point is that if we get the EDA grant, we will save maybe something like twenty percent on the cost of the build-out. Right? Because.
And actually, it'll be, it'll be more than that. We think that this, um, is about four million dollar project. Um, and, uh, they would be paying or providing about, uh, two and a, two and a quarter.
Uh, right, I mean, the, the, the project overall of the whole city, the whole city build-out. So if we're, if we're talking ten or twelve million for the city build-out, and this is two point two-five, then maybe it's somewhere around eighteen to twenty percent. That, that, that was the calculation that I was doing in my head there. But, um, so I think that's important because it saves our local dollars. In the alternative where we didn't go after the grant or we had already built out this area, thus we're not eligible for the same grant dollars, and we were able to get maybe fewer grand dollars or no grand dollars. It would cost more in our local dollars to do the project. So like, I'm on the, I'm on the fiber committee. Um, I guess I'm the only one here who's on the fiber committee. I'm supportive of, of this approach because it saves local dollars. But at the same time, I do wonder if we've paid insufficient attention to questions of equity in all of this. I don't see any alternatives, given the way we've drawn the lines. But I, I wonder if we drew the lines differently, if we talked about different areas in different ways. Um, maybe going forward, you know, after, after this year or after this next phase that is the subject of the next slide. I wonder if there's a way, um, that we could draw those lines differently and get this service into the hands of people in somewhat less wealthier neighborhoods sooner that are underserved by inter- internet generally. I mean, I know everybody's chomping at the bit for this service, but there are people that, that do have a greater need for it and a greater need to pay less for the internet that they have to have, especially during the pandemic, but even after the pandemic. I just think that we really haven't talked in terms of equity. Uh, and maybe we, we really ought to prioritize that as we start thinking about what we're going to do next.
Thank you, I appreciate, um, appreciate that, that feedback. And it is something that we certainly can, um, look toward. Um, I also am kind of thinking ahead. And when we look out towards twenty-twenty-three, there's one kind of swath that would still be remaining, and that would be east of Annacopper Mine Road to A Avenue. Um, and there's approximately eight hundred and seventy-five homes there. At that point, we will have covered the, the city limits and will be moving out to the urban growth area along Highway twenty in March's Point. So, um, in, in some ways, and I'm just kind of thinking off, off the cuff, but, uh, in some ways, some of the first areas that we did the installations, because we were able to use the, the aerial installations, we were able to cover some areas that, that probably, um, were older homes because they were built before everything moved to an underground requirement for, for installation, um, purposes. And so we may have done some of those things. But you are correct that we did not use the focus of equity as the, the basis for how we determine ne- neighborhoods. And that hasn't been any part of the discussion as we've been doing the build-out of the report. Are there any other questions on this slide, just in terms of the, the plan for network expansion? So I thought I would just go into a little bit, um, more detail in the, the twenty-twenty-one expansion. Again, this map, which does include, um, more detail than a previous map, is available on our website where you can click on it and go into more detail. We also will be, uh, are planning and designing for this Marine Heights area down in, in this corner. So the design work is currently underway. We did a high-level review today with our designers. Um, we also received the materials list, and we already have some of those orders already placed. But we will be placing larger orders for those materials. And this area will pass two thousand three hundred and seventy-five premises. So as we look to a thirty-five percent take rate, it's just over eight hundred installations that, that, uh, we are hoping for within this area. And we have a good start on that already with our pre-orders.
Mayor Gere?
Yes.
I, I have a question for Ms. Shu. Uh, Ms. Shu, you know, maybe it will come further in your presentation. But I'm also curious about, uh, given that the take rates, that we are exceeding what our projections were, I'd love to hear a little bit at some point about, um, what are the methods we're using to increase those take rates by making sure that those other people who, whom may, you know, may need our service recognize that, you know, we're here, we're ready, we're available. We want you to come join our network. You know, I mean, because I think that your, the earlier approach that you've taken and the fiber took was wonderful. And the ads, the signs on the trucks, um, the mailers that came out was superb. But I was just curious, you know, is there a later plan for trying to increase those numbers and really do a push for those people to come on board as well? Thank you.
Um, and actually, in the, I think I actually took that slide out tonight for some of the outreach that we have done. But most recently, we've had a big uptick, uh, because we've been utilizing reader boards. So, um, at the, the first, uh, at Highway twenty and Commercial, we had a reader board for a couple of weeks. We have since taken that down. And, um, I believe in the next week or two that it will be moved out, um, toward the roundabout at the, the West End so that people can call, um, and ask any questions that they may have of CJ and then get their, get their orders in. So that combined with Facebook have been keeping this, uh, keeping CJ, um, just about as busy as he can be while at the same time is, you know, scheduling people out into, to March to, to get their installations.
I, so in due time, I'm sure, but right now, your hands are full, and you're working it. Okay, thank you. You've answered my question.
Thank you. So this is the area that is part of the Economic Development, um, Administration Grant application. We have all of the areas in brown. And that, that's, uh, why we call it kind of infilling from A Avenue East. Um, I know that you're familiar with this map. Uh, but again, uh, we have an application in for two and a quarter million dollars. But again, and we have an application in for two and a quarter million dollars from EDA. And if that is awarded to us, then we will um continue with the the design and go through the the federal requirements for procurement and um contract uh for the construction of that. And then we will follow up with the installation uh that will happen this year for award of the grant or be our twenty twenty-two business um uh expansion area otherwise. We're keeping our fingers crossed. And that those brown areas uh cover one thousand eight hundred and fifteen premises. So that's kind of looking out for for this year's um area and next year's areas where we will be expanding. We do have a couple uh special projects that we're working on. Um, we are doing an ad hoc construction project, and appreciate that the City Council approved that agreement last week. The tenants will actually enter into service agreements for that business class internet, but we will be providing a fiber connection availability for six different buildings at that site. We will have the Anacortes Senior Activity Center online um the first quarter of this year. And we are in communication with Rock Island Communications about a dark fiber lease opportunity. So we will keep you posted as those um continue to to move forward. So the things that we're really working on right now are um the EDA decision on our grant application. Really will have a big impact on uh the direction moving forward for us. And we are continuing to work on installations in our current service areas with those be planned out already through mid-March at this point. When we are doing home installations, I I like to repeat this slide, and I talk about it because maybe it's not everybody is watching every month. But um the safety of our the homes and the businesses that we're entering, the safety of our employees is paramount. And we have thirty different guidelines that we are following. We are so appreciative of the trust that people put into us to allow us to to enter their homes. And we are um making sure that we have very stringent protocol about what we're doing to ensure the the safety of everybody. So that's very important to us um as as we're moving forward. We do uh training um and supervision. We talk about social distancing. We ensure every week that the all the PPE equipment that that people need, they have available. We talk about sanitation and cleanliness. Every day, we do an employee health screening uh from every single employee before they come into a facility or into a home. And then we do job site tracking as well. So we are are taking this very, very seriously as we continue and and have been. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. We're so pleased with the opportunity and the availability of the the service, and we look forward to continuing to to expand it. But if you if you have any questions, we're we're happy to answer them. Mr. Lundberg and I are both available on the on the line tonight.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Couple quick questions, the hundred megabit service residential plan there or the gigabit service. Is that an introductory rate?
These are not introductory rates. One of the things that's really unique about our um plans is that we do not change on a whim. It wouldn't take the the City Council um to make any changes in our cost and and financing structure. So no, these are not things that are that are changing. Residential plans are on a month-to-month basis. There's no long contract that people are signing. We do ask with the business plans that people um may sign a twelve-month contract with us.
And another question that uh I I hear people are asking is um is the city fiber that the city has deployed being used by any other providers to deploy or or to provide fiber internet inside the city limits?
Thank you for asking that that question, Mr. Walters. No, the city fiber is only being used by access Anacortes fiber internet. We are not sharing that with other providers who who may be offering services within the the community for business or residential.
And are there any other hidden costs uh on this uh that aren't disclosed here on this on this slide?
Uh, I can't think of any other fees. Sometimes people do request to have a static IP addresses, but those rates are also formalized and do not change without council.
And that's not a typical residential service?
That's not a typical residential unless somebody's trying to to run a a business out of their home or something.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Ms. Chu, I just want to testify as to the excellent communication by fiber department staff. When I had it installed at my house, they gave me a window of time, which a lot of um providers do. But instead of having to be home for that four-hour period, they called me at work and gave me a window where I could run home and be there while they needed me and then leave. And it took up a very short part of my day. So I want to give kudos to CJ and the team for being efficient, very communicative in a way that I don't see from any other utility companies ever.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moulton. We really pride ourselves on um really being the the internet service provider of choice, and that doesn't come lightly. It comes through intentional um customer service that goes above and beyond. It comes from having business plans that are affordable and reliable and that we're providing the service that we say that we're providing. You sign up for a hundred megabits per second, you're getting that as an upload and download speed. There there really are no gimmicks, and that's important to us. Thank you for the opportunity to to present to council tonight. I appreciate it.
Any additional questions for Ms. Chu? Okay, at this time, I will adjourn the City Council meeting. Thank you all for being here, and have a lovely evening. Good night.